I shouldn't be here early. Okay, good morning. Thank you for being here for our regularly scheduled council briefing. We actually have a long briefing and I anticipate council members will be getting out here fairly hurt in a hurry. So why don't we go around and do the full council actions first and then we'll take the state legislative updates since you'll have more than two people listening to you. And for the full council, actually for my, on the governance side, we have two items that will be up today, two resolutions. One is just a resolution that will endorse our work program and in that capacity, we worked out the issues where there are overlaps and major projects across competencies of different committees and so we'll endorse that. And the second one is a resolution adopting all of the SLIES for our adopted budget in 2019 and endorsed budget for 2020. And so there's approximately 32 SLIES. And for the viewing audience, I'll describe more what a SLIE is when we hopefully endorse the resolution. And that's all we have. Councilmember Johnson.
Good morning. I want to first start by saying a big thank you to my colleague over here, to my right, Councilmember Gonzalez, for chairing what my staff tells me is now officially the longest public hearing ever.
Ever.
Ever. So nearly four and a half hours, four hours and 25 minutes. The previous record was four hours and 22 minutes. So congratulations, Councilmember Gonzalez.
And she did a lovely job.
And a big thank you. I was not watching live, but I did, I did watch after the fact and I'm very grateful to several of you for being there and in my absence, can't say enough thanks. I've got a necessarily long briefing discussion this morning for a couple of reasons. I'm carrying water for Councilmember O'Brien to start with. This afternoon at full council, we'll be discussing.
Can I do a timeout?
Timeout.
Because the team has to get on the road, we may, we'll take it back in the natural order and since we're joined by colleagues late, I might add. Why don't we reverse the order so we give that, it's just due time-wise. So why don't we bring the—
Wait, I'm sorry, Council President Harrell. May I, before we do that, I have to leave at 9:45 because I have to be somewhere at 10:00 AM.
I got that note, correct.
So with the exception of perhaps giving me a little bit of room to do my committee report, I'm total agreement with your suggested—
Okay, so let's do this. We, the briefing had the state team up first and then the preview, but I know you had a conflict, so why don't we do yours first?
Thank you.
Go to the state update and then we'll come back. Is that okay, Councilman Johnson?
Of course.
Okay. So, Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor and it works out great. We know you have a conflict.
Yeah, thank you so much. I apologize to my colleagues for having to leave a little early today, but I had a last-minute commitment come up that I think is important for me to be at. So I'm going to have to leave a little early.
Understood.
So really quickly, nothing on this afternoon's full council agenda. On the introduction and referral calendar, you will all notice a reintroduced council bill regarding the Seattle Police Department hiring bonus ordinance, which leads me to what committee will be hearing this Wednesday. So on Wednesday, my committee will be meeting at its regularly scheduled time on Wednesday, February 27th at 9:30 AM. There will be three items on our committee agenda. This will, the first item will be a second discussion on the proposed SPD hiring bonus ordinance, which is Council Bill 119468. And this newly introduced version of the bill that I just referenced at the top of my remarks will allow for consideration of amendments that I intend to move forward on Wednesday. So we've modified the title of the bill to allow for more flexibility in terms of some of the policy issues that I highlighted for you all last week during council briefing and that we discussed during my previous committee hearings. So we will hopefully be able to have a good discussion on those amendments and then have the committee take a vote and provide the full council a recommendation on the council bill. There will be a few provisions that I'll advance, all sort of related to accountability that include expanding the incentive hiring bonus to new recruits in addition to lateral police hires. And it also includes a variety of different requirements for reporting and measuring to ensure that the program is actually having its intended outcome and that it's not cutting against some of the other progress that the police department has made in terms of hiring diverse, from diverse communities in the city. So we will be discussing those particular issues on Wednesday and some of this language will be published later on this afternoon by the city clerk. So happy to continue to have conversations with folks around some of those issues. Other items that we will hear in my committee is we will get a report from the Immigrant Refugee Commission on their 2019 work plan. And then lastly, we will consider, and we will consider and vote on a reappointment of a commissioner to the Immigrant and Refugee Commission as well. Next, just really quickly, wanted to give folks a quick little update on some issues that are happening that are related to my committee and I wanted to make sure that it's on folks' collective radar. So I'm a member of the Domestic Violence Prevention Council here in my role as a city council member. And one of the things that we have been talking about in that room is around proposed changes to regulations to Title IX at the federal level. Title IX is effectively a body of law that provides a lot of gender equity protections and anti-discrimination rules and regulations for women and families in particular. And we just heard last week that the president's administration has issued a regulation that is not going to be helpful to many people in our local community and across the country. So we've been watching whether, we've been watching how this rule was going to play out. The city of Seattle did provide public comment objecting to the proposed regulation. We now know what the published regulation will be and needless to say, it is very bad. Effectively, it would undermine decades-old public health programs for affordable birth control and high-quality family planning, as well as sexual health services for both men and women. This rule effectively puts millions of people, vulnerable residents here in the city of Seattle and across the country, at risk of not being able to access contraception, cancer, and STI or STD screening, and other family planning care. And we obviously know that that is going to lead to tremendous amounts of negative public health outcomes if folks aren't able to access the reproductive health that they need to access in order to engage in appropriate family planning and to prevent health consequences related to those issues as well. So I'm looking forward to continuing to stand with members in the community fighting for reproductive justice. And that's what I have to run off to do at 10 o'clock is to join folks over at Planned Parenthood and the National Family Planning and Reproductive Health Association to speak out against this horrible, horrible outcome from the administration. Secondly, and somewhat related, is my work plan includes, which we'll all be considering this afternoon, we'll be considering approving our respective work plans, but my work plan includes a component around addressing the affordable childcare crisis in the city of Seattle, which we know is, is true for the entire state and the entire country. Wanted to make sure that folks saw the recent report that was just published by King County's Women's Commission. And they have issued a report with five different recommendations, including everything from the Childcare Assistance Program, which the city of Seattle currently has, but expanding that county-wide, to allowing government public employee workers to be able to bring their children from a specific age to work if they choose to, to also including potential incentive programs for employers to be able to support their workers' access to affordable childcare, both in the, in the city and in the county as a whole. So really excited about digging further into that report and those recommendations, hoping to be able to keep a conversation by inviting those members to my committee sometime soon to be able to hear from them, their thoughts around other types of solutions and ways that the city of Seattle can be helpful. I know that the state legislative agenda that we passed last year includes prioritization around affordable childcare programs. I noticed in the report that we're about to receive today that there's only two bills that I saw that are highlighted in the legislative report. So I hope somebody in my stead will ask some questions of our lobbying team around what other bills and legislative packages are being considered at the state to address this. And really, the report from King County Women's Commission highlighted the fact that really what we need is additional revenue and that needs to be prioritized in the next month by our state legislature in order to really fund many of the subsidization programs that many of our middle and low-income families need to be able to access affordable childcare. So putting a little plug in for my colleagues to pick up the mantle on that once I have to excuse myself for this morning. And I know that these fine ladies are listening to me and I know that it's something that they care about as well. So I trust that you all will provide us some additional information and I'm going to watch the video eagerly and we'll connect with you all offline to get additional information on those pieces.
Very good, excellent. Councilmember Bagshaw?
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, thank you for your work on that. And I really want to invite Councilmember Moscata and I to sit down with you on this. Of course, you know, we put some money in the budget last year, $100,000, to help find childcare facilities either in this building or near this building for our own. And we want to make sure that we're coordinating with you. So thanks for the good work you're doing there.
Yeah, all of that work falls into my committee, is both sort of tangential to the, as we know through the Families in Education Preschool and Promise levy, will be receiving the implementation plan hopefully soon. We're still working on a few issues with the executive in order to have a smooth referral of that particular plan, but there are several components within that particular plan as well that touch on this issue. So really important for us to look at it holistically and, you know, the standing up of a childcare facility here in City Hall or somewhere near City Hall is a, is a component of what I think needs to be a broader strategy around addressing this crisis. And the report in particular talks about not just the lack of affordability, but the realities around how the childcare workforce is really carrying the burden and the pipeline is very small. And through the Families in Education Preschool Promise levy, thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Moscata, we were able to pass some components in that levy that, that will help us begin to address the realities of not having enough childcare workers in the pipeline to provide these really important services. So that will all be, I think, part and parcel of the conversation as we receive and consider the Families in Education Preschool Promise Implementation Plan. Lots more to come on that. Excited to work with folks and I know that there's a lot of energy on this council to tackle this really important issue for our working families in the city. Lastly, I'll just end by saying that I will be out of the office on Thursday and Friday. I will be heading to Los Angeles to join several council members and members of the community to kick off what is going to be their Fair Work Week campaign. So there will be, on Thursday, February 28th, 2019, I'm going to join the Los Angeles City Council President Herb Wesson and Councilmember Karen Price, along with members of UFCW-770, the Center for Popular Democracy, and the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, to kick off their legislative process for an ordinance that is very similar to our very own secure scheduling law. Happy to support the efforts of this coalition and to head on down to Los Angeles as they continue to fight for fairer schedules and more predictable schedules for their hourly workers. And really happy to be able to share some of the work that we've been able to do here and on the city council with those different jurisdictions who are dealing with a lot of the same, same issues that we were dealing with here. So we had a huge, successful opportunity in Philadelphia to share lessons there about our secure scheduling law and they passed their law in December. So that is great news and really happy to share both my work and Councilmember Herbold's work on that particular ordinance down in LA. Excited to join them for a couple of days as they endeavor to pass this.
Taking it on the road.
Yeah. We're going to, we're going to share what, share what we've learned. So that being said, thank you so much for indulging my ability to give my report now.
Representing us at two very critical events. Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Okay, so again, the plan will be we'll hear from our state team and then we'll go around the table after that. Okay, so come on forward. Why don't we start the introductions, just lead us to your presentation. Look forward to it.
Good morning. Lilly Wilson Codega, Office of Intergovernmental Relations.
Cheryl Swab, OIR.
Karen Benedetti Cargill, State Relations Director.
Christina Postlewaite, State Lobbyist.
And we have passed the first hurdle of the legislative session with policy committee cutoff last Friday. So we know you've been monitoring and we've been reporting on a significant volume of legislation. We're hoping to see, to kind of siphon through that at this point. But we are going to highlight very quickly, we promised Jennifer we would keep it short today, given some other issues on the agenda. We're going to go through some of the top issues that you've highlighted for us. The first thing we wanted to talk through though are some logistics around the upcoming council lobby day we're hoping to schedule later in March. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Cargill, who is back from eternity leave.
It is good to be back.
Thanks to see you.
Thank you. So council lobby day, we sent out a survey last, I think it was last night. We're looking at March 19th and the 21st. I know that your office sits in the 19th, looks for you, Councilmember Bagshaw, but if you can have your staff respond to that, we're trying to find a date that will work best for as many council members as possible. We're a little bit restricted on time. We typically don't schedule council lobby days when they're on the floor or in some of the more compact, like during fiscal time, just it's very hard to get some secured meetings. So we have that, a two-week period and then some days are on the floor. So just let us know if there's a date that works for you and we will pick the one that works best for everyone. And as Lilly mentioned, we just passed the policy cutoff. So that means any bills that hadn't moved out of their policy committee house of origin are mostly, mostly considered dead. There's always exceptions, of course, especially bills that are necessary to implement the budget and TIB. And this coming Friday will be the fiscal cutoff. So bills that haven't moved out of their house of origin fiscal committee, again deemed dead and less necessary to implement the budget. So, and then the following two weeks, we'll be seeing a lot of floor action. A lot of bills are moving forward this year. I think that in the previous briefing, they had mentioned that there have been several thousand bills introduced and I think we saw about 2,000 die last week. So I know that your report doesn't seem very short. I'm hopeful that next week it will be pared down a little bit more so we can stay focused with everything. Just another thing we just wanted to highlight was budget and revenue. So we're waiting for the next budget forecast to come out. That's going to be on March 20th and that's when we, after that's about when we'll see the first budget proposal come out. This year, the House is slated to go first and then the Senate. So as those proposals are introduced, we will of course keep you guys appraised and send you updates about what's built in with that.
What's the conversation around new revenues?
Still ongoing. Capital gains has been something, there's been a couple of proposals that have been put forward. I think right now they're looking at having 50 million in revenue for the next biennium and as compared to last year's budget, it was about 45 or 46 million. So there is a bump in the revenue over the next two years, but I think they're really looking to see what that final number will be. As you know, there's a lot of big expenses that are coming up with, we see with True Blood and a lot of the behavioral health opioid issues that they're looking to tackle, mental health, potentially additional issues with education, culverts, just some big items that are going to need some funding. So I think it's still in conversation, but we probably won't have a good indication until we get closer to the budget period.
Is there further conversation about infrastructure? Because a couple of years ago, that was the big deal. And whether it was roads and bridges and, you know, the water and sewer pipelines, every city is facing this. There was quite an article in the New York Times yesterday about this and about, you know, the federal government had promised that they were going to do it and then they haven't, but it leaves it back to us that if the cavalry's not coming, what is the state going to do? And I've really, we are focusing on the right things around housing and homelessness and mental health and I agree, but I just wonder whether or not the conversation about the infrastructure is essentially dead this year.
Well, I know that there's a conversation on the transportation side. I know that there's a discussion about having a small revenue package and we can definitely provide some details with where things are at. I can follow up with like what the components are and what some specific projects that they're potentially looking to fund through that. I know the capital budget was stretched pretty thin, but we can, we can check in on that too.
The big thing I'm looking at is the Northeast Corridor, the Freight Corridor, Magnolia Bridge, Ballard Bridge. That's something that Gail Torrelton, Noel Frame, Senator Reuben Carlyle and I have been working on and I haven't heard a peep and would just like to know where that is.
Yeah, happy to follow up with that. So I'm going to just dive right into the bulletin. We're going to start with education. I would kind of re-categorize this just to be alphabetical versus nothing is anyway done and by priorities, just alphabetical by category and then numerically by bill number. Lots of conversation about like college promise and those, and those types of programs. We've been really involved with the bill, within the Opportunity Scholarship, that's House Bill 1927. And that would, that's on page two. That would allow for any municipal dollars be matched with state funds through the Washington Opportunity Scholarship Program, which is a really interesting concept that we're putting a lot of weight behind. And just because I know this is a reoccurring issue, I know we talked a lot about MacLeary and Post-Mcleary over the last couple of years. And a lot of the school districts are looking for expanded levy authority. As you may recall through MacLeary, that they had, they had capped essentially what the school districts would be able to collect. And as you saw with Seattle Public Schools in the passage of their local levy in February or earlier in this month, that they would need additional levy authority in order to collect that amount. So that's something that's being worked on right now. A lot of different proposals are being tossed around, some at 20%. The 20% of their state and federal is, one of the points that are being considered are potentially a $3,500 or $3,000 per student cap. Just as a reminder, in the past, Seattle Public Schools levy authority had been 37%. So we're still seeing quite a little bit of a discrepancy there. So really important issue still happening on education. I know that we had, there was a bill and just to speak to Councilmember Gonzalez's about, a point about childcare and affordable childcare, there's been some conversation about for students. I don't have a bill as prepared for you on childcare, but I'll definitely get that all pulled for everyone. I know that there was a lot of conversation about that on Children's Day, which was on President's Day last week. So we'll get a list of the bills that's being considered and keep you all updated on that. Moving to environment, that starts on page three. 100%, 100% clean energy is a really big topic this year, was a bill that came up last year, a lot of back and forth. Two, there's a couple of big proposals. The House and the Senate though introduces companions are a little bit different at this point. Essentially what it is, is pushing the utilities to be 100% clean by 2045. A big sticking point is the use of natural gas and whether or not that would be something that they would be allowed to use in order to help with like brownouts and to avoid any interruptions with energy and electricity providing. So big topic this year, it's advancing at this point and we're continuing to monitor that really closely. On page four, transportation electrification. I didn't know, I talked to you about this last two years, still working on this. This would allow City Light, so public, public utilities and now it's also been expanded to private utilities to have authority to use ratepayer dollars to go towards electrification infrastructure, so EV charging stations. The bill that we're most supportive of is currently in House rules, so we're excited for that. We're still pushing forward. But there's a lot of, a lot of new environmental bills that are for this year. I know last year was kind of, we didn't see a lot of things progress. So if there are any particular bills that you're looking at or interested in, please let me know. We can provide you some information. Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you so much. So we just had a hearing in my committee last week on, with our friends at Seattle City Light. And one of my concerns is how much money and energy the electrical vehicle charging stations will actually cost us in the long run. We need to do the back-of-the-envelope math still. So I just had a few quick questions on what you just mentioned. Yes, I want to make sure that our ratepayer dollars are going to be invested into cleaner energy options. Obviously, electric vehicles is one, but does this bill also allow for us to use those dollars for investments in bike lanes, completing the network, allowing for, you know, maybe alternative transportation models like scooters and electric bikes, for example? Does it allow for that type of flexibility in how those dollars would be used or does it specifically call out electric vehicles?
It specifically calls out electric vehicles and it's specific to incentivizing other, other entities and other, like private people essentially to invest in that infrastructure. So it takes a little bit of the burden off of essentially the city to be able to pay for it and incentivizes. So an example would be if you were going to be putting in, or if you're going to be purchasing an electric vehicle, that we could incentivize that purchase by giving a small rebate for the charging station. But it does not speak to anything beyond the, the infrastructure for electrification in this particular bill. But I know other bills have spoken to that, so I'm happy to pull some of those and—
My concern would be if the dollars are specifically earmarked for electric vehicle charging stations or rebates to customers. That seems a little elitist. It seems classist in terms of who would be able to access that type of alternative energy model. And I would just want to make sure that we, if there is an opportunity, are expanding it out so that we can do more innovative things that are lower cost to the majority of the population, like expanding access to bike lanes, electric bikes, electric scooters, that type of thing. So I'm sorry I hadn't seen it before. I've been trying to do a better job this year of tracking legislation with you all. I'll follow up with you, but I just want to put a flag in that I don't think that those dollars should be specifically earmarked just for electric vehicles. It would be nice to see it as one option among many for alternative transportation models.
Let's definitely connect offline about this. And I know that we've been working to have Mendy Drook, who works with Seattle City Light down at the state, at the legislature, to come and join us in one of these to really give a little bit of a deeper dive on this particular issue.
And Councilmember Herbold had a point?
Yeah, just real quickly, on the electrification piece, when we say electrification of vehicles, I just want to be clear that we don't only mean cars. This is also to support electrification infrastructure for shore power.
Correct.
At our port.
Yes, thank you. And buses as well. It's another big topic that as King County looks to electrify their bus fleet and stuff, that this would be a tool that would help promote that effort.
Okay, that has a different connotation to it because I definitely want to support our only naturally occurring deepwater port, which is right here in our backyard, and electrify that port along with our metro fleet. But that is very different to me than rebates for individuals or charging stations for individuals because that does not feel like a comprehensive public policy solution.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Herbold.
Yeah, absolutely.
So again, lots of environmental stuff moving this year, especially around stewardship. You'll see plastic straws on here, single-use plastic. So take a look at some of those and if there's anything else that you're interested in, please let me know. We've had SPU really involved in that conversation and are very supportive of the majority of these efforts that are continuing through.
I'd just like to have a sense that gestalt, is this moving? Because in the last few years, we would get to this point and then it would all go away.
I'm sorry, for which one?
EV.
Just the, all the environmental issues. You know, last year, the governor was really out there working and then it all just kind of—
We're, we are hopeful. I think that there's a, a very productive conversation on all of these happening. I know that there was, everything got really wrapped up in the carbon pricing conversation. There was a lot wrapped up in the 100% and a lot of those just kind of battled each other and then everything just came to the last minute and everything unfortunately just went down as part of that. So I think there's a lot of awareness and wanting to preserve a lot of these, especially since so little moved forward last year. So we're, fingers crossed, we're staying involved in the conversations and want to see a lot of this progress this year. Moving on to general government, that starts on page five. There's a couple of proposals here about the capital gains tax and what's being considered with that. That's, we have on page six, Senate Bill 5961. And then back on page five, another one, House Bill 1172 and 5314. So we're, we're watching those. Those will be pretty much tied up with a lot of the budget conversations. So even though that they may not be moving, if anything was enacted, it would be necessary to implement the budget. I know Councilmember Gonzalez had shown interest in some of the wrongful death legislation that is continuing to move this year and we're watching that very closely. So I wanted to bring those to your attention. And then Councilmember Bagshaw, I just wanted to bring to attention on page six, substitute House Bill 1796. It's the commercial property clean energy bill. And these are some loan programs that are being discussed that would be able to go to some of the URMs. So that's, that's currently one of the proposals that's being discussed right now. So happy to connect with you. We sent in some letters of support from both OSCE and Emergency Management and we're excited about this bill this year. So I've taken up a big chunk of time, so I'm going to pass it on to Christina for healthcare. But if there's anything that was on other of these lists, please do let me know and I'll provide you some additional information. Thank you so much. She's adorable.
She is. She really is.
Good morning. I'm going to, I'm going to brief you on a couple of big healthcare issues that have come along. I have to say, they're very exciting. It was exciting to see how many cleared, how many of the good bills cleared policy cutoff. The opioid bills, that was, there's quite a variety of bills related to opioids and substance abuse disorder and those all cleared policy committees. So they're now in the fiscal side of things. I wanted to also finally be able to alert you about T-21, which we have worked on for many years. And thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw and Councilmember Johnson, on this one. It passed out of the House. It passed out of the House. Yeah, so we're very excited about that. And under this bill, selling these products, so tobacco and vape products to people under 21 would result in a gross misdemeanor. So now it heads over to the Senate, and should it pass the Senate, Washington will become the 25th state to raise the smoking age to 21. We're very excited about that development. I also wanted to highlight for you, issues around vaccination have been quite the topic in Olympia. We have a lot of people coming to campus to voice their concern about removing the philosophical or personal exemption away from families. But with the outbreak in Clark County, there's been quite a bit of rapid movement around this. So the vaccination, the personal objection, so it would have repealed the personal belief exemption for all vaccines required for school entry and childcare enrollment. So this passed out of the, out of the House Committee. This would be, this would be around measles, mumps, and rubella. And it is on its, in rules right now. So we're very excited about the movement of that. This has been a big issue, and there's been a lot of, a lot of outspoken folks on both sides of the issue down in Olympia. On housing and homelessness, unless there are any questions. On housing and homelessness, the local option bond bill, which we're very enthusiastic about and continue to support with all of our, all of our being here, it's moving along really well. So this is the one that would allow cities and counties to bond against the state sales tax to fund affordable housing and other programs related to that. It's moving along really well. It has, it's going to be exact today, I believe is the 25th. I'm losing my, yeah, it is 25th. It's being exact today. Likely that vote happened at 8:00 this morning. So we'll be able to update you on the outcome of that. I don't expect any issues. And then on the 27th, it'll be, it'll be, oh, sorry, the 26th, it'll be exact at 8:00 AM, too. So we'll keep you posted. There's a lot of enthusiasm around this. It could be a really, really good opportunity for cities and counties to receive much-needed funds. And just a reminder, we made sure to, to make sure the language would allow cities and counties to simultaneously access the funds, not just counties, as it was listed last year.
Question? Question? Yeah, thank you. There are three different bills related to property taxes and seniors. Can you just real briefly explain what the difference is between the three of them?
I do know one of the differences includes veterans as well. I think there are various groups behind this on, on all of these. They're also all in the Finance Committee. So I think what'll likely happen is we'll see some shaping up of these bills as they move forward. I don't imagine we'll see all three move out of the fiscal committees, but we'll be sure to keep you posted on this.
I think implementation date is a big part of it, and then the income threshold, so what that would be.
I'm particularly interested in the income threshold, moving it up from the $45,000 that it is now, which is just not workable for Seattle. So would love to find out more about that.
Yeah, happy to do that. We had been in a lot of conversations with the groups that were working on it over the interim, and I think that they were trying to figure out what the right, like, at what stage, like, can we just, like, a flat income by, different, you know, different jurisdictions? Is it kind of averaging in different places? And then the big pieces, at what point they're going to be implementing that. But I know one of the bills has a hearing that was just added at 1:30. I can't remember which one it was, but...
And we have an email as of this morning from the folks at the ARP who've been leading on that issue, so we can follow up with you on that soon.
Thank you so much.
An email we haven't read yet.
On context on that, is the historical practice to have a threshold consistent throughout all jurisdictions, or does it take into account the local prices?
It currently is statewide.
Statewide, right?
Yeah, so then our point is, is that, you know, $40,000, $45,000 in Seattle is very different than $45,000 in other parts of the state, and why we think that it would be beneficial to reflect the cost of living in this area.
So continuing in housing, I wanted to, I wanted to just alert you to a big win that we experienced last week. This is around the SEPA exemptions for city sanctioned shelters and encampments during a state of emergency. It was one of the better hearings I've seen. We had huge turnout and huge thanks to Camp Second Chance, who came down and talked about how important this is and how many, how many more options it would produce for people who are experiencing homelessness. So it was, it was heard on Monday at 1:30. We found out about it Friday at 6:00 PM prior, so, and Monday was a holiday. But so many people are eager to mobilize on this issue. We had an amazing turnout, and it passed easily out of committee. And it currently sits within rules, which Senator Winn is also on. So we are so happy with how that turned out, and we're very thankful to all of our supporters and Camp Second Chance especially.
And moving on to public safety, I'm going to review some of our priorities on, beginning on page 14. There has been significant movement this legislative session on a package of firearm responsibility bills, including the I-9, the historic I-940 compromise between law enforcement and community groups. That was signed by the governor on February 4th. I know a lot of folks here put a lot of work into that, and we're paying close attention as those negotiations move forward, so congratulations. Legislation to ban high-capacity magazines. House Bill 1068, sponsored by Representative Valdez, passed House Judiciary on February 1st. On the bottom of page 14, substitute House Bill 1225, a bill sponsored by Representative Jenkins, would require law enforcement secure firearms when responding to domestic violence incidents. And that passed House Civil Rights on February 1st and is on the second reading calendar. Bipartisan bill, notably sponsored by Republican Dan Grifey, substitute House Bill 1231, on the bottom of page 14, would eliminate the statute of limitations for sexual rape or sexual abuse of a child. It also expands the statute of limitations for rape in the first, second, and third degrees, and removes the requirement that lack of consent be clearly expressed by the victim. That passed the Senate unanimously on February 20th and has been referred to House Public Safety. Very impressive vote. On the top of page 15, Representative Pelliciotti has introduced several proposals to protect victims of sexual violence, including House Bill 1382, which would extend immunity from prosecution for prostitution for those seeking emergency medical assistance, and substitute House Bill 1383, which would modify the crime of patronizing a prostitute from a misdemeanor to a gross misdemeanor. Finally, in the gun responsibility category, a ban on 3D-printed guns, sponsored by Senator Dingra and Representative Valdez. In the middle of page 15, passed policy cutoff and is also on the second reading calendar. And then under civil rights and safety net legislation, many of you have worked very hard on to eliminate the death penalty penalty in statute, sponsored by Senator Carlisle. Senate Bill 5339, on the top of page 17.
I had one question.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Muscata?
Oh, sorry, Lilly.
Go ahead.
Director will answer. Thank you so much. Just before we move off of public safety, and perhaps I'm looking in the wrong section here. I'm interested in 1772 and 5751 related to motorized scooters. I think a lot of folks have asked questions about public safety, and how can we help make these more...
It's transportation.
Is it transportation? So you're going to speak to it? Okay, great. This actually does seem to me like a good public safety bill, so I was thinking it might be in safety, but I'll save my questions for transportation.
Happy to touch on that, Cheryl.
About a scooter over the weekend.
Okay, I'll get to that.
Cheryl's our expert there, given her, her long history at SDOT and experience with the issues. So we'll try and cover that for you as well and monitor that. I'm going to go back to civil rights and safety net. On the top of page 17, actually, I'm going to move over to the top of page 19, Senate substitute House Bill 1783, sponsored by Representative Gregerson, would establish the Office of Equity to promote opportunities and reduce disparities across all sectors of government. That made policy cutoff and is currently in House Appropriations. And then an issue, I know Councilmember Gonzalez has been watching closely, the Lisa, Senator Wellman's Keep Washington Working Act. On the top of page 19, would prohibit the use of state resources and data sharing without a judicial warrant and limit immigration enforcement access to employees in the workplace. That is also in House Appropriations. And the last bill I'll touch on before moving to transportation would establish an issue Councilmember Warr is brought to us as an interest for her is the establishment of the Washington State LGBTQ Commission. Substitute Senate Bill 5356, on the bottom of page 19, that passed state, Senate state government tribal relations and elections on the 15th.
Two quick circle backs. One was on page 12, accessory dwelling units. That's our ADU that we've been dealing with. If you could talk a little bit about that. And then I also want to say thank you on the Senate Bill 5339, the death penalty elimination. It passed the Senate on my birthday. Thank you for making that happen.
Congratulations.
And then what's next? February 15th, day after Valentine's.
Happy birthday.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, thank you.
ADUs, I know, so there are many conversations moving around accessory dwelling units. And some of the language that some of the city coalition had worked on to move the bill forward would have kind of eliminated some of the policy objectives that I think were important to you all. So those concerns were expressed. We ended up weighing in con on ADUs as it was limited only to the city of Seattle, and there was some preemption concern around that. But we are continuing to work with Representative Fitzgibbon as vehicles are still moving forward on some of his minimum density proposals to talk about opportunities to expand, you know, access to, you know, creative ways to address homelessness throughout the state.
I have a follow-up on that. I had the opportunity to speak with Representative Paulette this weekend, and he was mentioning concerns that he had about this particular bill. Basically, that it would, it would result in local governments giving up its ability to use regulatory review of ADU permits. And I didn't really understand the limitations that he felt came with this bill, or the limitations or lack of local control that was implicit in this.
And for those very reasons, those concerns that he highlighted to us, that, and he had said, you know, it's, that there needed to be some work on the language before anything moved forward. So we did weigh in con as a result of that, and he chairs the local government committee. So while we weren't supportive of that proposal, we definitely understand the investment and looking at those creative solutions as they relate to ADUs, and we'll continue to keep you updated as those move forward. And I know Representative Fitzgibbon is very eager to take those issues up.
Fantastic, thank you.
Ready for transportation? Okay. So I was going to start with automated traffic safety cameras, something we've been working on for many, many years. And...
A lot of money.
Many people do. And we're excited that, it seems like this has more traction than it's had in the past. There's been a lot of support. We've had some really good help from our departments and particularly SDOT in coming down to talk about it. And at the moment, there are a couple of amendments that they're looking at. One would be to make the first offense, you would waive the fee for the first offense. And also, at the moment, it's looking like it will be Seattle only, which, of course, we would like to have it. We do have the sort of greatest congestion problems. There are other cities interested in it, so we will continue to work to let them have access to it as well, because we think it would be beneficial not just to us, but to others. But that's looking more positive than it has in the past, and I think we're really pleased with it.
Talking about the safety cameras here.
Yep, safety cameras, yeah. 1793. And I will go to scooters. So motorized scooters, more controversial than one might imagine. There certainly are safety concerns that have been raised about the scooter bill. We had a lot of concerns with some of the preemption language that was in the original bill, and we worked really hard with SDOT and with, and with AWC and some other groups, and it looks like that language has been removed. And at the moment, that was, I want to say, three to five, sections three to five. I can let, I can have it written down in an email somewhere.
Are you talking about the House bill, the 1772 House bill?
Yeah, there's two. There's House Bill 1772 and Senate Bill 5751.
I don't know which one I'm talking about.
They're both the companions.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking of them the same. So we feel pretty good that the, the parts that we were concerned about, which we felt were going to limit our local authority and regulation, have been removed. At the moment, the way it is written is fairly permissive, so cities could choose to have them or choose not to permit them. We are looking at the bill more carefully, just, we've heard some concerns from the mayor's office about whether or not we've missed anything in terms of what else might be in there that could be of concern to the city. But at the moment, that's where we are in the scooter bill. So, questions?
Sure, thank you, Ms. President.
Before, before we get to questions, can I just get a, like, quick, high-level overview of what's in the bill? What does it require?
So I, honestly, we focused so much on the parts that we were worried about that I can't tell you that much about what's in it, but I can get that for you. But my understanding was that cities would be able to permit them if they chose to or not. And so honestly, beyond the...
Who's built to say that?
Well, that's, that's an excellent question, and that's a question that the mayor raised as well, like, what's in it for the state? If it's just Tacoma does them already, Spokane does them, so I need to get the answer to that question for you.
And I think as Cheryl noted, you know, for commercial use, there's a lot of interest in definitions around, you know, both, I think, increasing the wheel size, defining what commercial use would look like for them to operate in that environment. You know, things like helmet use are being explored, so I think there's a lot of moving pieces, just given that that is not something that, that happens currently in terms of the commercial space.
And I think, like, questioning why, what the state's doing here.
Well, the original bill had issues about indemnification, liability, data, preemption, all kinds of concerns for us. And so we, we weighed in really heavily about those concerns, but once that was removed, we...
I think we need to sort of correct the record here, because the way that I read this bill, it doesn't actually weigh in heavily on preemption. It doesn't weigh in heavily on directing cities and municipalities, which is precisely my concern. In fact, what we've heard repeatedly from, from some of our friends here in the city is we need better regulation to make sure that we understand how fast these motorized scooters can go, what the age limit should be, where there's going to be parking requirements. Everything in this bill helps create that level playing field, so that we're creating the ability for kiddos who are under the age of 16 not to be able to rent these, so that we're saying where these scooters can drive. They can drive on our bike lanes. It says that they should be parked in the same place that we park our electric bikes. It talks about speed and limiting speed. It talks about the ability to make sure that there's legal protections. It talks about designating parking areas and locking mechanisms. So I'm going to be glass half-full here and say that I think that this is important for us to have a solid foundation for regulating a new type of technology, a new type of transportation, so that we have standards across the state. Let's be very real. That's what the state is supposed to do. They're supposed to create a bar that ensures safety or protections across the board, and then it's up to the local municipalities on whether or not we want to raise that bar. Think minimum wage, right? We set a state minimum wage, and it's up to local municipalities if we want to raise it above that. So if we're thinking about this glass half-full, this helps us answer the question about how we can make motorized scooters a safe mode of transportation and alternative to cars, which we know are not safe, and actually create more injuries and deaths than bicycles and scooters. So if you're telling me that we have now found language that we can move forward and we feel like there is not an unintended consequence of preemption, which I never thought was the intent of this legislation in the beginning, I disagree that it was trying to preempt us or limit us. And I think instead, if it was unintentionally interpreted that way, and if we found a path forward, I am going to take that as good news today. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And I want to make sure that we, as your council, who I think should have equal weight into weighing in on legislation and the pros and cons of various pieces of legislation, that you can rely on us to help bat around ideas and think about what our position as a city can be. It is very hard, as folks who've been in Olympia know, to unring a bell. Once we've weighed in with opposition, once we've signed in with concerns, it's very hard to unring that bell. It happens, and people find good pathways forward. And I know you have some of the best teams, team members available down there. So glad to hear we're moving forward. But I do want to sort of correct the record, and I don't think that this is you saying it. I think that's maybe been an interpretation of the bill that's out there. I think that's maybe been an interpretation of the bill that's out there. I believe that this was a public safety bill to help us set up those standards. And so I'm glad to see that we found language that helps clarify that this was never intended to be a preemption.
Nice.
So can we hold off for a second? So the Senate bill is more, described more in detail on page 23. And Councilmember Skater brought up a lot of those issues about the age and the speed. I'm going to ask that we speed up a little bit because we have two very lengthy, two very lengthy executive sessions. And so just wrap it up, please.
And that is the, the end of the report. Good timing.
Councilmember Skater, do you want to say any more closing words on your scooter?
I like that you used speed in that, too. We're going to speed it up or we're going to slow down the speed of the scooters. No, one more thing on childcare. The biggest childcare bill that I've been tracking is House Bill 1344. I actually haven't seen whether or not there's a companion bill. I believe it has a hearing today. I don't think I see 1344 on our education list. If you could add that, this is really critical to our friends at, for example, SEIU 925. We've been working very closely with childcare providers over decades. So would love to see us weigh in with support on that.
So just real quickly, I see two folks in queue. What's going to be critical is also to work offline with these folks and get our schedules ready for March 19th through the 21st. So 19, 20, 21, or 19 and, or 21?
19th or the 21st.
19 or 21st, we got to get that locked down. Let's keep this scooter moving. Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Herbold.
I just want to flag, since we're wrapping up, that there are several bills related to sound transit that are on, still up for consideration. Most of them would be very damaging to the ability for sound transit to collect revenue, which of course has a very negative impact on our ability to build out the ST3 plan and fulfill the requirements that many voters asked of us when they adopted the plan in 2016. So there's a lot of oxygen that we could expend on that topic. But I wanted it to not go by without being mentioned that several of those bills are still alive. And they, one of them, Tim Iman Bill, would roll back a lot of funding to the tune of $6 to $7 billion worth of that financial capacity for sound transit. So we've got a lot of people that are working on that, but I don't want this session to go by without us mentioning that potential negative impact to the expansion of our light rail system.
Very good. Councilmember Herbold.
Just a request that next time you come back, or one of the future times that you come back, if we could spend a little bit of focus on the many different tenants rights bills that are in the state legislature. I think it's really exciting and potentially really game changing for us here in Seattle as well.
Absolutely. We, we've been in conversations with the Office of Housing and SDCI about potentially doing a joint presentation, just because there are so many moving pieces and so many really hopeful policy bills at this point, as well as some budget items.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Lily.
Next week. Next week.
So before we go around the room, I'm going to just do something a little differently. I'm going to go to Councilmember Johnson first down there. We have two very lengthy executive sessions, and I personally have a meeting at 11:30 and 12:00. And so I want to participate at least in the second executive session at the beginning. So if we get dispense of some of the usual everywhere you've been. Councilmember Johnson, you got it.
Thank you, Council President, and I will do my best. The introduction and referral calendar has several items for discussion today, which I know, one of whom, one of those items I know Councilmember Herbold will want to touch on at length a little bit later. That's Council Bill 119469, which she'll discuss. There's additional quasi judicial matter, so the following brought to you by the Law Department. Clerk File 314413 is a council land use action to approve a temporary expansion of the North Seattle Precinct located at 1,049 College Way North. It's a type 5 land use decision that would allow for portables to be added to the North Police Precinct. It's pending but does not plan to come in front of the council anytime soon. But I anticipate even me just reading this aloud means that we'll generate some emails. In addition, Clerk File 314416 is an application of Turin LLC to rezone a 6,200 square foot site at 10501 Midvale Avenue North from a commercial 140 designation to a neighborhood commercial 55 designation with an M1 suffix. This application is now pending for the purposes of our council's quasi judicial rules. And as usual, council members should avoid communication about the merits of the rezone or the other applications with either proponents or opponents of the project. And as usual, if you have questions, please see Kittle Freeman of our central staff. On our full council agenda today, there is one item that I'm carrying forward on behalf of Councilmember O'Brien. That is the confirmation of Sam Zimbabwe as the SDOT director. I won't expound upon Sam's work, we'll save that for 2 o'clock. But I want my colleagues to be aware that Councilmember O'Brien's office is still in the process of drafting an expectations letter. And that expectations letter, if we can get it completed, will need to do some of the usual possible suspension of the rules, et cetera, et cetera, in order to attach that expectations letter to the clerk file associated with Sam's confirmation later on this afternoon. Following our full council meeting, either at 2:30 or immediately after our full council, we're going to have our select committee on MHA. So permit me to give you just a brief run of show of how this afternoon is going to go. We've got three individual pieces of legislation that we're going to be considering. One relates to the program itself, the citywide MHA program. The second is amendments to the comprehensive plan that would implement MHA. And the third implements MHA on a TOD site in the North Gate neighborhood. The majority of the amendments that we're going to be discussing is about that first bill, the council bill to implement MHA. And we've got about 100 different amendments in consideration. We've grouped those amendments into four different groups. Group one are amendments related to the consent package. We'll have council central staff walk through all of those amendments as part of group one. After the description, I'll ask if any council member is interested in pulling any of those amendments for discussion or individual vote. And then at the conclusion, I'll ask if any member wants to go back and again reconsider any of those options for a vote. My intention is then at the conclusion of that, we'll do a vote on the group one amendments and then a vote on any individual amendments that have been pulled that relate to group one. Group two will be amendments that were not included in the consent package, which we've already pulled out. Many of those are map amendments. There are a few small text amendments as well. Group three will be amendments related to the comprehensive plan bill. There's very few of those, but the same process will be vetted. Council central staff will walk through those amendments, and then council members will be given the option to pull those. And group four are those individual comprehensive plan amendments that were asked by individual members to be individually voted on. There are no council amendments for the North Gate TOD MHA bill, so we don't expect there to be any amendments associated with that last bill. A memo has been circulated by central staff. I encourage you to ask questions of them between now and 2:30. If you have further questions, then of course Noah On and Amy Gore from my office are available to answer any questions that you might have as well. We will take public comments because we're planning to take a vote on this bill out of select committee today. So we'll take public comment upfront. We expect a robust turnout, as there was again last Thursday. So I would buckle up for at least an hour plus, if not more, of public comments. And then the deliberations will conclude, will begin at the conclusion of those public comments. We anticipate voting the bill out of committee today. And if that, we're successful in doing so, that will put these three bills in front of our full council meeting on March the 18th. Why don't I stop there and ask if there's any process related questions? I'm not seeing any. That concludes my report, Council President.
I do have a question about what you've described as the group ones through four. Are you saying that we're going to be jumping, well, that we're not going to be doing all of the text amendments and all of the map amendments together, but that we're going to break them up according to, the first cut's going to be whether or not it's, we're going to be doing the consent package for both the text amendments and the map amendments together, and then the non consent package for, instead of doing all of the consent package ones for the map and then the text individually?
I apologize for the confusion, Councilmember.
No, I don't think I even asked my question very clearly, so I'm amazed if you understood.
No, I think, I think you asked it very clearly. The consent package is commonly referred to now as group one amendments. And that includes both text amendments and map amendments. So the totality of amendments that we discussed at our previous MHA committee meeting, whether they were text amendments or map amendments, those are all lumped together into group one's consent package. And then following that, we'll discuss individual amendments for votes, and we'll keep them within some semblance of that order. Text amendments going first, map amendments going second.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you for your patience and advance.
Thank you very much. I had a note to try to speed it up again because legislative update went a little farther. Councilmember Skater, we'll just come down this way.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're just scooting along today, huh?
Yes, trying to scoot along.
Okay. I was thinking about that for too long. All right, all right, here we go. So first I want to say thanks to everybody who turned out last Friday. There was an incredible turnout at the Central Cinema Theater as we did a showing of the movie Roma. And Congresswoman Jaipal joined us, and individual employer representative from Hand in Hand was on stage. The audience was filled with people who had helped us craft the first city level, national domestic worker, oh, sorry, first city level domestic workers' bill of rights. And Congresswoman Jaipal announced that her and Kamala Harris are going to be introducing the nationwide domestic workers' bill of rights together. Very exciting turnout, and we wish them all the luck and very excited to see that move forward. The second item, as Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned, I too was hoping to go to the Attorney General Bob Ferguson's announcement today to really stand up and defend Title 10. Just want to clarify, Title 10, I think Title 9 was said earlier. And unfortunately, really want to, you know, send them our love from afar because I want to be here with all of you for the exec session. But there's three things that I think are important to mention, and Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned some of them. One, access to birth control is an economic stimulus. It is an economic justice issue for women. Access to abortion that is legal and safe is preventing people from dying. And access to accurate information for women regarding our reproductive healthcare is the same level of access to information that every person should deserve. We should not have to question whether or not we're receiving accurate and full information from our providers. These three things are at risk with the gag rule. So thanks again to Attorney General Bob Ferguson for continuing to stand up for Washingtonians. Today at full council, I want to flag that there is going to be a bill, Council Bill 119462. This authorizes the sale of Seattle City Light's property to be sold to the North Passage LLC. Want to be very clear about something. This is Seattle City Light's electrical transmission and distribution corridor. So that means there are electric lines that correspond with this parcel of land. We cannot build affordable housing on this land. Everybody knows we passed the disposition policies last year that said every parcel of land should be held so that we can create affordable housing. And if it can't, then we should consider potentially disposing of it and using as much resources as we can to invest back into affordable housing. This is a piece of property that is literally 30 feet wide, so we are not actually missing any opportunities here. Thanks so much to Seattle City Light for going through that rubric with us at the last committee meeting. We are going to be moving forward to sell this parcel and, and really appreciate them engaging with us to make sure that that analysis has been completed. Our next Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee will be on March 7th at 9:30 a.m. And on the calendar this week, Tuesday, tomorrow, I'm going to be over at the West Seattle Block Watch Network meeting. Councilmember Herbold, I'll be in your district, thank you so much. On Thursday, I will be in your district, Council President, for the Central District's Neighborhood Block Watch as well. Appreciate our neighbors reaching out and encouraging us to ensure that there's public safety protections being adhered to and thinking creatively about how we can do a better job communicating after there's been a public safety crisis, for example, shootings, and how we can streamline communication with our neighbors. Friday, I'm going to be in District 2 because of our canceled tour of the Beacon Hill area and office hours due to the snow. We're going to be back on the 1st. And we'll be at 9:30 to noon at Fresh Flowers, in case folks are interested in office hours, we'll be there. And I'll be speaking on a panel on democracy vouchers for voting rights in the afternoon, I think at Seattle University. Just want to say, I'm really excited about our new schedule. It's twice every month in districts corresponding to the district number. So in D3, for the rest of the month of March, we will be in District 3 and so on.
Oh, nice.
So we should publish that tomorrow. That'll come out for our schedule. Should I keep going or do you want to keep scooting?
I like, I like to keep scooting. So I'm telling you, we have two long executive sessions. Councilmember Juarez.
Okay, so I guess we all got that text from Mr. Ferguson yesterday to attend.
Yeah.
I said no. Let's see. Not that I don't care, but I had other stuff to do here. Yes, thank you. So we got nothing. Civic development, public assets, native communities, we got nothing today.
What?
Oh, I could go on and on, but you know, I have a lot to say, but I care about everybody else's time. Thank you very much. But I do want to say thank you for setting up D5 last week with the mayor. It was just an excellent presentation, so thank you. All right, well, he's not here to hear how quick I'm going to be. Wednesday, this week, three items from the Finance and Neighborhood Committee, Broad Street Substation, Historic Preservation, big report on healthy food availability in the food bank network in Seattle. The UW researchers, yes, oh, yes. Councilmember Juarez was right. In D5, she has the fewest number of facilities, the least number of dollars. Even with what we put in last year in the budget, she still is on the very lowest end. And D3 came out having the most facilities, food banks, available for folks. So the report is really great. They'll be here so we can ask questions and make sure that you've got a copy of it beforehand. But it really is exactly what we were asking for in our sly at the end of budget last year, is come back and talk to us about what facilities are available. And the last is we've got a resolution on the watch list of large, complex, discrete capital projects, thanks to Councilmember Herbold for pushing this forward through the budget last year. It's great. Done.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Nothing on the full council agenda today. Tomorrow, I have a Civil Rights Utilities, Economic Development, Arts Committee meeting. There'll be two reappointments, the Museum Development Authority, one by the MDA Governing Council and one by the Seattle Art Musician Museum, Art Museum. There will be two Seattle Public Utility Bills, one vote on the city of Seattle datum point. There was a public hearing last month in my committee. A datum point is a reference point used in surveying and construction to provide a known location for measuring the position or height of an object in relation to the datum point. Last time we did this was in 2003, and this legislation would eliminate the need for future code updates each time there is a national adjustment of the datums. Also be voting on a contract with Waste Management for construction waste collection services. Waste Management's the current provider and was selected to continue after an RFP. The new contract is for six to 12 years and will begin in April 2019 if approved. We also have two briefings in committee. One, the city auditor's review of the Navigation Team's 2018 second quarter report. Lots of good recommendations in there for the city auditor, also an acknowledgement that there are, there is a paucity of bathroom and hygiene facilities, also noting deficiencies in particular districts, including D5. Also going to be hearing a report from HSD, their data report on the Navigation Team, the numbers of, of interactions that they had with people and the outcomes from, from those interactions. And other things that are coming up for me, I have a regional, I'm sorry, Watershed Resource Inventory Area 9 Committee on Thursday. And Wednesday evening, Sound Transit will hold their West Seattle Open Heart, Open House as part of the EIS scoping process. That'll be at the Alki Masonic Center. And then Friday evening, one of my favorite organizations, DNDA, Delridge Neighborhood Development Association is going to be having their annual event, Destination Delridge. It's a great time. I encourage people to attend. Councilmember Bagshaw already mentioned Finance and Neighborhoods Committee and the fact that the capital projects watch list, the first watch list since we've created a new process for oversight of capital projects, will be coming forward. And I look forward to talking with council members about how we are going to be reviewing those, those projects moving forward.
Great. And, and your committee, I was so fast, I'm just going to give you one more second on this, that around the NAV team, I've spoken with many of the people that were involved during the emergency, and they said time and again, people will come in out of the cold, it was 24/7. They're not interested in coming in and then getting thrown out on the streets again at 6:30 in the morning. So back to that, we just know that that's where the answer is, to get people off the street and into someplace
And in shelter. I mean, that's one of the things that the, the city auditor is bringing up over and over again as well.
Okey dokey. All right, are we ready to move on? Thank you very much. So at this time, I'm going to move an executive session. I mentioned before, when the meeting started on time, what I had for today, so I'm not going to repeat that. So as Presiding Officer, I'm announcing that the Seattle City Council will now convene an executive session. First of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. And council's executive sessions are an opportunity for the council to discuss confidential legal matters with city attorneys as authorized by law. And we always reserve questions of public policy for our public open sessions.